Commissioner Burley.
Here.
Commissioner Mickey.
Here.
Commissioner Jerry.
Here.
Commissioner Ruda.
Here.
Chair Brzezinski.
Here.
Thank you.
If that's what we all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we move to a nonsense.
Chicago.
Today.
Leave it.
Sure, we had Earth Day last, or a couple Saturdays ago on April 26th, so Earth and Arbor Day. Sorry about that. There were, Val had planned it and it came off great. It was very successful. There were tons of vendors and a lot of the public that came out to the event for a tree plant in a coast like Oak and in Demondorf Park. And so that was a very successful event. And then there will be a sea level rise meeting that is coming up in a week from today on May 15th. And we know a lot of the commissioners are interested in attending, but we've been advised that not all the commissioners can be present at the same time because that would constitute a quorum and it would trigger public meeting requirements. So if we can coordinate your attendance with Valerie, that would be, that would be really helpful for us. It will be on Zoom and it will be recorded. So that is something that if, if you're not able to attend, you can always watch the recording of it. And that's all I have.
Is that something that should be publicly noticed in a public meeting though? I'm just wondering.
It's a, it's a community meeting. So as one of the requirements of our coastal commission grant, we have to hold community meetings. And so it's the same information that was presented from our consultants on the sea level rise adaptation strategies is going to be at the community event and we're just trying to solicit input from, from the community on that.
But I think all of our, all of our community meetings that were held for the, the urban forest master plan, the early ones, those were all noticed and all commissioners tried to be there. Like why are we, I'm just wondering why we're switching it up on this topic because on the, for urban forest master plan.
I think it was a steering committee that we had on that master plan.
No, 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 the original, the, we had a summer, it was before Justin, when Sarah, when we kicked off the urban forest master plan with Davy Resources Group, there was a, it was noticed and all commissioners attended. So I'm just wondering why this would be different. That's unusual.
As part of the Forest and Beach Commission, you are part of the greater steering committee. It's really a 10-person committee. So you with the five non-commissioned members were the steering committee.
But that wasn't a steering committee meeting. That was a, that was a community workshop on the topic of the urban forest master plan. At Frayer's first one.
That was a summer meeting. That was July of 2022. I don't even know if you were here yet, Justin.
I was there. I wasn't with the city, but I was there.
Oh yeah, with the meeting, yeah.
So I remember Brian was there. You were there. I don't remember everyone that's there.
I'm just wondering why, why on something this important to our community, we wouldn't just notice it? Give a public notice so that all the commissioners could be there?
Well, we, we had a very similar presentation from the consultants to the Forest and Beach Commission on the same information. And so this now, you know, is soliciting input from, from the community and outside of the community as well as trying to get as many people as possible to attend this. And so we worked with the city clerk on how to notice the meeting and, and she just, you know, made a point that not just this commission because it will also go to our planning commission and, and the city council eventually because it's the adoption of the local coastal program amendment. So.
But in this instance, it sounds like you're asking commissioners not to attend because that would present a problem, right? And I have, I take an issue with that.
I do too.
I think that's not, that doesn't feel right to me.
Do you want me to go get her?
I'm sorry, what?
Do you want me to go get her? Or we can just maybe an email to her and we can send it out?
I can. I would think also it would be open to anyone in the city, including us.
Yeah.
And it would be valuable for us to hear that if we're making arrangements later.
As long as we don't discuss it amongst ourselves.
Well, and hearing what the public has to say, like in person, live, like I just see, it just seems like it's so different than what we've done for any other topic like this.
Should I go get her?
Steve knows her.
Yeah.
The date right now is, is May 15th, right?
It's a week from Thursday.
Yeah.
Today.
Yeah, the 15th. So.
So as it stands right now, only two commissioners could attend the way the meeting is currently set.
And then others can listen to it.
After the fact.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
What is the?
Yeah.
I think Zoom attendance is considered attendance though. I don't think, I, I don't think that they make a distinction on that.
Yeah. It can't be a quorum, so.
We just never had a meeting like this where it wasn't noticed and, and I don't know why we wouldn't do that. And we have, I, we have time to notice it.
Yeah, I was sharing that too when we were walking, that this is not what we've done in our historic meetings.
Well, it just seems important that we hear, you know, that what people want.
What's changed?
Yeah.
Melanie agrees.
While we're waiting, do we want to jump to the consent agenda or do we just wait?
I have another announcement.
Okay, another announcement, okay.
It's in the force report, but I didn't want to wait that as of earlier last, as of last month, we reclaimed the Tree City USA designation. So I just want to share that, some positivity and some good, so.
Great news.
We, with Arbor Day last year and then just submitting some forms, we, we got it back. And I think that, you know, Carmel should never not have that. It, it burns me every time I drive home and I see Monterey 43 years running and it's like.
Oh gosh.
We could say the same thing, minus one.
We could do approval of it.
I think for the vote, Yvette needs to be here though for the vote. But, but what I could do is I can at least read the statement on public appearances so that after, we can, we can at least, that will be quick. Okay. So under the Brown Act, public comment for matters on the agenda must relate to that agenda item and public comments for matters not on the agenda must relate to the subject matter jurisdiction of this legislative body. hateful, violent, and threatening speech is impermissible public comment as it disrupts the conduct of the public meeting. This is a warning that if a member of the public attending this meeting remotely violates the Brown Act by failing to comply with these requirements, then that speaker will be muted. Members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern, not on the agenda during public appearances. Each person's comment shall be limited to three minutes or as otherwise established by the commission. Matters not appearing on the commission's agenda will not receive action at this meeting, but may be referred to staff for a future meeting. Persons are not required to give their names, but it's helpful for speakers to state their names so that we, they may be identified in the minutes of the meeting. We can maybe, I can at least describe the consent agenda and we'll have to wait till Yvette for vote, but that'll keep us moving. So for, we have two items on the consent agenda today. The first is the acting public works director's report for April 25th. The second is the approval of the meeting minutes, which were distributed with this packet of April 10th. Items on the consent agenda are routine in nature. They do not require discussion or independent action. Members of the commission or the public may ask that any item be considered individually for the purposes of commission discussion. Unless that is done, one motion may be used to adopt all the recommended actions.
I did have a question on the acting directors' report. Can I ask it?
We would need to just pull it out of the consent agenda.
Okay.
And have it as a topic and we can do that.
Okay.
That, we can do that, so. If you'd like to ask that now.
Sure.
I think you.
Hi everybody.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Brandon. I'm the Assistant City Administrator. I understand there's a question about an upcoming community meeting respective of the, what's the meeting again?
Sea level rise.
Sea level rise. So currently my understanding is the meeting is noticed as a community meeting. It wasn't noticed as a meeting of this Brown Act body, the Forest and Beach Commission. So that's the situation in this exact moment. What I need to do, what we need to do is we need to talk to our attorney and see if, if one, we have time to change the notice because if the whole body wants to show up to that, then it does need to be noticed as a Brown Act meeting. So we can't change that in this moment. So what I would suggest is let staff work with our attorney, find out if we have time, A, to change the noticing of that meeting. And if we do, then we'll let all of you know individually so you can join. If it turns into a Brown Act meeting, that means that the planning commission can come, city council can come. It's a whole open thing. If it's too late for that, then we can give a report out or it's recorded, I believe, right? Okay. So there's nothing that would prevent you from watching the recording. But if you'll give staff, we can't do it in this moment, but it's not a decision we can make right now because it's already noticed. But if you'll give us some time, we can figure out what the possibilities are and then work through the chair.
Okay. Is it a three-day notice that needs to be given?
It depends on, there's, there's different requirements. Depends, a special meeting, if it's a special meeting, it's actually only a 24, a 24-hour notice. So I think, I think we would have time, but I don't want to make any promises or come to any decisions on the spot like this. So let us work through the chair and then we can get word out to the whole commission through our staff.
And then I just have a question, why the process change on this topic? Because this is, I think, the reaction all of us have had. When we've had community meetings in the past, they've been noticed so that everyone can attend. So for example, the very first meeting we had on the urban forest master plan in July, was it 22 or 23?
23.
23, it was 23.
Was it 23?
Yeah.
It was.
Yeah, it was 23.
It was 23, two years ago.
That Sarah kicked off, right? Was, we had.
Sarah Burley?
No, Sarah, our former city forester.
Okay.
Yeah. So we didn't have all the commissioners there, but certainly they had been invited. And so every time we've had a community meeting on a topic relative to the forester beach and certainly all of my tenure on the commission, they've been noticed so that the commission, it wasn't required commission attendance, but any commissioner was welcome to attend. And so the idea that commissioners are being asked not to attend this so that we don't end up with a Brown Act violation is, feels probably, it feels like there's been a change here and I'm just trying to understand what happened.
No, I don't think there's any change. And you're certainly not being, it's, it's not that it was no, it wasn't, I don't believe it was intentional. It's just how it's noticed right now. So the answer in this moment is, you know, if the meeting was tomorrow, you all wouldn't be able to go as a commission. But I think we have some time. So let us look into it. As far as your question of what's changed, I don't think anything's changed. It might've just been an honest mistake. I can't speak to the past, but what I can tell you is moving forward, we'll go look and see what we can do. It sounds like the full commission's desire is to attend this meeting and we'll see as staff what we can do to accommodate that. And we'll get back to you very quickly.
And I, I think over a week ago, I actually emailed that all the commissioners should be invited. Like I, when I got the email invitation to come, I forwarded it back and said, let's make sure all the commissioners get this invitation. And I had no response back that, that they couldn't attend or they shouldn't attend or that the notice wasn't done properly. It just seems like this is a process change that's concerning.
Okay. I'm like, I literally was just overworking on a housing element item. And so I just got pulled over to answer the question about the Brown Act thing. But we'll look into it, I promise, and we'll get you an answer of how and when we can get you to attend the meeting.
Okay.
One question. Is this going to change the nature of the meeting as it is planned now?
In what respect, sir?
The way the leader's going to lead the meeting or conduct it.
Could you now speak to your mic?
Oh, sorry.
Is this going to change the nature of the meeting, other than it's being planned to do now?
No, I wouldn't imagine, sir, no. You know, one of the things when we have community meetings and we have presentations from consultants on a thing, on an item where you, a board or a commission might ultimately be the decision maker, we do, we do tend to offer some guidance, you know, for those decision makers to take more of an observational role because the community is there to get feedback from a consultant. And then ultimately the community is going to provide you feedback at a public meeting. So the goal of those meetings when a commissioner or board does attend is not to be influencing or putting their thumb on the scale of what's going on. So it shouldn't, it shouldn't change the content of the meeting. So ideally it's just you would be there watching and listening, getting the feedback real time. And we would give that guidance to the commission and we do that for the planning commission or city council anytime they attend a public meeting ahead of time.
And that's certainly how it's, it's happened in the past, right? It just, it's, yeah.
I think it was, it was irregular that we weren't even aware of it. We sort of all came about, hearing about it. My, my husband and I had filled out the, the survey and just so happened to fill it out on his email. So he got an invitation and I said, wow, I know nothing. He said, what is this? I said, I have no idea.
Well, I'm certain it wasn't intentional.
An irregular thing that we weren't, you know, made aware that this was happening until sort of by, by chance.
Yeah. We'll work to, we'll work to find a solution very quickly for you and we'll work back through the chair and the commission.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for stepping in.
Thank you. Okay, we prepped the consent agenda, Yvette, while you were out. Just, I just read what was on the consent agenda and it sounds like we had one question on an item. So if you'd like to, we'll, we'll pull the, we'll just.
I just want to ask you all a question. You went through the whole thing on public appearances, but you didn't announce Kelly. Is there anyone in line?
Yes, yes, we.
So I just kind of.
We will.
We haven't got there yet.
We'll do that next. Yeah, it's coming, don't worry. I was just reading it to use up the time. So yeah, I was, I was trying to be, see if we could be efficient. Okay, so on the, on the consent agenda, before we entertain a motion on the consent agenda, it seems we have a question on the public works report. Neil.
Right. Hi, so this is about one of the Wallace Group projects, specifically the shoreline infrastructure repair project. I noticed I went back to last month's report that you put out. Thank you for that. It's the same status, which is, I guess you're working through the professional services agreement. The question, specific question, I think there's also a general question I have, why it's taking two months at least to get through that.
The project manager who's managing that is working with the consultants on that agreement. And so they're working through the scope. They had to add the sand ramp to the scope. And so it just takes, it takes a while to work through those things to get the budget and then get everything approved. We had to go to the council and get that approved as well.
Okay. So this is normal timeline, if you will, to get this stuff?
Depending on the project.
Okay. My general question was going to be, do we have a timeline? Because I know there's a lot of really important projects going on. Is there a timeline view of all these projects so we can kind of track this stuff? You know, and the question I'm asking is from a process point of view. Projects get late day by day, week by week, right? And so I've just never seen a timeline view of, here are the projects going, here's their status. You know, we expect to have it, you know, the professional service agreement done here. We expect to start it here, just to kind of make sure we're tracking all that. Does that exist?
For the individual projects and the individual project manager, Wallace Group is one of the city contracted project managers. And so they are tracking, you know, their, once, once they get their agreement in place, then they will be tracking the project. And so Javier Hernandez is our other project manager for the city. And so he has projects that he's assigned to. And so then he also has a schedule that, that he adheres to.
Can I see a timeline view of all these different projects? Is that something that's, that I can see?
We don't currently have that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else question before? Would anyone like to make a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry.
Commissioner Burley.
Yes.
Commissioner Mickey.
Yes.
Commissioner Jerry.
Yes.
Commissioner Ruda.
Yes.
Chair Brzezinski.
Yes.
Thank you, this motion is passed.
We would now move to public appearances. Is there anybody here that would like to make a public appearance? Please step forward.
Good afternoon, everybody, and I would like to compliment staff on the Arbor Day festivities in the park. It was a big success if you weren't, you know, able to attend. And I think you did a wonderful job of putting all of that together. And it's nice to see that we're back with part, as part of the Arbor Day Foundation Group, you know, as being Tree City USA. Just a couple of questions. I was wondering, what is the progress on the master plan? And what's the progress down in the EIR? Where, where are we on all of this? I mean, it seems to me that's, besides the sea level rise and all the problems with, with the beach, that this is a very important topic and we haven't heard anything in a while. So are consultants asleep or what's going on? So can we have, can we have kind of an update on that as soon as possible? I'd really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Kelly and members of the commission. My name is Cindy Lloyd. I stand before you as one of the newest docents for the First Murphy. It's taken many, many months and lots of telephone calls and inquiries to finally get inside in order to be trained. I now know how to unlock and lock the front door. I know how to turn on the heat and turn it off. I even asked where the fire hydrant, fire alarm was because there was a big notice for it, but I couldn't see it and it's behind a door. So at any rate, what I wanted you to know is that in a more official capacity, what I would like to offer is my gardening passion to work on a redo of the First Murphy garden. Not the garden next to the First Murphy, but particularly the garden in front of the First Murphy to bring it back to a more reflective of the era in which the Murphy House was built, which was 1902. So I prevailed upon Justin informally, just to let him know that, you know, my hands and my body and my ideas are, are ready and willing. So he had a suggestion about how to go it in a more formal manner, so that's why I'm here. Also, in attending the city council meeting, I learned that the forest of Carmel is going to go, well, I don't know if it's going to undergo a change, but it's going to, there are state fire mandates that are now going to demand that it comes under a change. So while the housing element is trying to change our housing in Carmel, the forestry is trying, I mean, the fire departments are trying to change the trees in Carmel. So just thought I'd give you alert if you weren't aware of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cindy. Please step forward.
Hi. My name is Mary Kenny and my husband and I live near the corner of Santa Rita and Fourth and Carmel. And I'm here with kind of a big request. I'm asking if you might consider suspending all non-emergency removal of trees that are under the stewardship of the city between March and August, the most active time for nesting birds. My request is prompted by an incident, incident about a month ago at the corner of Fourth and Guadalupe. I came around the corner and there was, the tree trucks underneath the tallest pine in our neighborhood there taking down the tree. So I, I drove home, got out, ran back over, said, stop, there's nesting birds in this tree. And I'm so sorry, Justin, but I think they threw you under the bus. You're used to it probably. They said that you had approved the tree and that you hadn't seen any nest. I don't know if that's true, but there, there, there were nesting birds in this tree. And I called, I called the tree company. And I called, I called the tree company, I called the Public Works, talked to very nice people. Something must have happened because they stopped. So that never happens. But anyway, they stopped. And actually, the guy that was up in the tree found a nesting bird there. And it was actually in the cavities. So the woodpecker's actually nesting cavities, not sticks, like not stick nest. So I thought the birds were safe. And that was on Thursday, I think was the time of your last meeting. And the next Monday, I walk out of the house and the tree trucks are there again. It's like, what the heck? And so I ran back over, nesting birds are in this tree. It's a different guy, different tree guy. I said, look, it's against the law to take down trees that have nesting, have active nests in the trees. And so he must have called, I actually all called the Public Works again, talked to Tom, very nice. They must have talked again because I went back over and they stopped again. So, okay, so we are, we save these particular, these particular birds. But I guess I'm just concerned that it took this much effort for this one situation in my little corner of Carmel. And I guess I'm just hoping but wondering if there are other nests and birds, nests that are being taken down inadvertently. So just quickly, there was a timely article in the New York Times a couple of days ago called "I Break for Robins," and where the author documented declines of wildlife populations and severe declines of birds in North America. Seventy-five percent of species are being impacted now. So I know this seems a lot to ask, but I feel like it's the least we can do. What a statement that would make if Carmel by the Sea took on this policy. We would stand out as an example of a community that recognizes that we are not the only residents of this city that are taking care of families. It would be an act of awareness and generosity toward our wildlife neighbors that could really use a break right now. Thank you for listening. And I do want to just say, too, that I really appreciate the professionalism and how nice people were at the Public Works office, and actually the tree guys, too. They were really nice.
Thank you. Just quickly, yes, birds from Montreal, if you want to pass it around for you guys.
Chair, can I respond to this?
Yes, but I was just going to say, Mary, in our public appearances, since you're new coming in front of our commission, typically at the public appearances, people can make comments or raise things, but it's not something where we move into like a dialogue on.
I understand.
But you're, but, Justin, if you'd like to...
No, I just, this one's particular. It's very, it's timely.
Yeah.
And we, you know, we have had issues in the past, and it's been hard to do the right thing necessarily. But we currently have Denise Duffy and Associates serving up at Forest Hill Park for birds. And we have 27 removals that have just gone out that they're going to do bird surveys on first to comply with the North American Bird Treaty Act.
Okay, yeah. And I was told that by the tree company. I just, I think in this particular situation, you can't just look up, and again, it's not you, but, you know, I live there, so I see them back and forth. And they don't, they're not always going back and forth, so you don't just see it in a few minutes.
Yeah. The tree climber at community's tree service actually took Patrick's camera, put it down in the cavity, didn't see anything up at the park.
I'm glad to hear that, then. Yeah, this is just my experience of this one situation, and it just scares me a little bit. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Is there anybody else that would like to make a public comment? I see Linda on Zoom.
As you might expect, I completely agree with the prior speaker. Just, it is the Carmel thing to do, to be concerned about wildlife in Carmel. I mean, that is part of our soul. And I think we've left it behind a little bit too much here and need to get back in touch with it because the prior speaker is right. You know, bird populations, even common bird populations are plummeting. And nesting season goes until July. Maybe we ought to consider adjusting our timeline for pruning and removing trees to midsummer instead of doing it in the springtime. Also, grass removal, ground nesting birds will get annihilated, you know, when you use weed whackers on tall grass in the springtime. So you might want to wait until it starts to brown before you do that so that you can keep track of any potential, you know, junkos, for instance, that like to nest on the ground. So thank you, former speaker, for bringing this up. It's been a concern of mine, too. Thank you so much. Bye.
Thank you, Linda. Is there anybody else that would like to make a public appearance? Okay. With that, we will move into our orders of business. The first order of business is the consideration of installation of a split rail fence at the North Dunes Habitat Restoration Area.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair and Commissioners. I'm going to very briefly present to you the consideration of an installation of a split rail fence at North Dunes Habitat Restoration Area along the Fourth Avenue Boardwalk. The Habitat Restoration Area was designated an ESHA, environmentally sensitive habitat area, several years ago. It's home to protected species, including the endangered tidestrum lupin. The installation of a split rail fence is a way to protect from dogs and people entering into the habitat areas. Currently, there is post and cable or rod and cable fencing that does not protect as well from dogs. And just as part of the background information, the Fourth and Beach Commission approved split rail fencing for the North Dunes area, but along Ocean and San Antonio last year. This is an example of what the fencing looks like. We have had reports back from our biologists and volunteer crews that there is trampling by dogs. And the new fence would be paid for out of the operating budget of Public Works and installed by our team. Here is a map. And you can see the blue line that we got to walk today is the area where we would replace the current style of fencing with a split rail fence. And just as, for interest sake, here's a map of the occurrence of the lupin. So staffer recommends to approve the installation of a three-rail split rail wood fence at North Dunes Habitat Restoration Area, adjacent to the Fourth Avenue Boardwalk. Any questions?
Val, can you remind me, we received a report on this North Dunes Habitat, I think, in the past six months? And I thought the updated report was that that area was doing well. Is that correct? It was presented by, I forget who presented it, but they did, they do a count every year of the tidestrums lupin. They do counts of everything in that area. And I thought that the report was they were pleased with the progress. Is that correct? Am I remembering that correctly?
I don't know, maybe Mary can answer that because I don't have it off on the top of my head.
Yeah, I don't recall if Val had started yet or not, but it's John with Denise Duffy and Associates had done a presentation. And I believe it was last fall, but I don't know the exact month it was. And so he did, but it was a recommendation a while back from Joey Canepa with Native Solutions, as well as John at Denise Duffy and Associates, that this split rail fence be installed to prevent the pedestrians and dogs. That was one of their pretty high priority recommendations that they had made. And I believe it was part of that report that was made as well to the commission.
I have some questions.
Sure.
Can you describe how bad is it with dogs trampling in this area, people walking through it? Give us a sense of, is this like once a day, 10 times a day, once a month? I mean, how much damage, things like that?
I would say we want to aim for zero intrusion.
Right. What I'm talking about right now, you mentioned that dogs are trampling in that area. I'm trying to understand what the impact is right now.
I have not personally done a count or a scientific study on the trampling, but I've been out many times, also keeping up with ice plant removal that's happening, working with those landscapers to identify where all the protected species are so that they can get into those areas as gently as possible. And so I have noticed dog prints many of the times that I'm there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have definitely, I have definitely walked that area, and if the dogs are off leash, they wander and they're...
Thank you.
And they're not, and people are letting them wander because they're on the way to the beach and they're not recognizing that there's something to be protected there. I also think...
There are signs, there are several signs there, that it's a protected area and your dogs need to be on leash.
Really?
Yeah. And I, I mean, I'm on that boardwalk regularly with a leashed dog and see people have their dogs on leash.
I guess the other question I had, and I don't know if this is a fair question, and maybe, Mary, you can talk to it a little bit. So this is going to be about $6,000, $6,500 to fix?
It's, that's the cost of the wood.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there, how do I ask this? Are there other projects that you could do with that money? And can you talk to whether they have higher or lower priority than this fence?
Currently, it would be our streets crew who is, you know, they do a lot of the maintenance around town. And so we currently have that amount in our budget for, in Public Works in the operating budget prior to the next fiscal year. And so if this commission is interested in installing the fence, it would be something that would likely be done before the first of July. Or at least the materials would be purchased in order for them to do it. And, I mean, they have a scheduled list of things that they do, you know, usually every time, every month of the year, they have things that they're, you know, doing. But they would be taking some of the staff, and usually it's a two-man crew that would be out there constructing the fence.
Okay. So it sounds like you've got money in the operating budget to do this. There's nothing burning in terms of like, well, we should do the fence, but there's this other thing I would really like to do, and it's as high of a priority as this one. It's just a matter of, you got some money, we do this, maybe we don't do some other work, but...
Yeah. I mean, the Public Works is always responding to emergencies, picking up, you know, dead seals on the beach. I mean, it's, every day you come into work, there's always different priorities that come up. But we have a scheduled list of things that we do. And so I think that, you know, this is something that we felt like we could fit it into our schedule. But if something were to come up and be a higher priority, you know, a health and safety issue, then that would take precedence.
Okay. Okay. But there's nothing like that right now?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have an idea of the different, you had shown us the first sort of leg of this on that side. Do you have a plan for the entire area? How long it will take? And, you know, what the different legs are that you plan to put in?
Well, we received feedback from John Wonkey from Denise Duffy on sort of the high priority areas. And he designated this area as highest priority. And then there's another as well. And he also gives us feedback about the invasive species removal and which, you know, so there's, if there were endless amounts of money, then there would be a lot more work that would be done at North Dunes, at Mission Trails, all over the place. But we'll just, I think the plan is just to do what we can, piece by piece.
So there's not a long-term plan to do the whole area? It's just, this is the most...
The whole area of fencing?
Yeah.
I'm not sure about that. There just are a few hotspots that we're trying to do our best, although the report is that the lupin is coming back. It's not just like something that's done and then that's it. Like you have to constantly be working at it over time.
I think the ice plant is more problematic than the dogs at this point, right? The invasive species, at least that's what I understood in the report. It was previously...
Yeah.
And how difficult it is to get the ice plant out of there, right?
And we are, we did just remove a whole bunch, and then we're going to keep doing some more of that as well.
Can I ask a question about the signage also? I only sort of saw a sign at the very beginning and at the sort of end, as you're about to go down those stairs to the beach. Are there signs along the way on the path? Might that be useful to just sort of reinforce to people that their dogs should be on leash or should be?
And why they should be on leash?
And why? Because I wouldn't have even known that if I didn't know that. You know what I mean?
I think interpretive signing and giving those, telling people what expectations are, are a good idea, but that might be a different project and you have to go through planning. And I know that there's different rules about signage here in the city. So I don't think I can really answer that question, but maybe it's something that then the commission could direct.
So there's signage there that says this? I was just wondering, is more of the same?
Yeah, more of what's already there.
Signage, just to reinforce it. I actually didn't even catch the first sign. I only caught the one as you went down the stairs. So just, if I don't catch it and my eyes are wide open for that, that might help to just reinforce, too. So, you know, we, you know, instead of putting up fencing along the hallway, which is costly, we start to just put out more signs to also help reinforce. I think most of the people who come here want to abide by our rules, and especially if they understand why. I just think that would be useful and helpful as a, you know, way of reinforcing.
I'll just say, this is just a personal opinion. I'm on that boardwalk all the time. I think it is one of the most spectacular views in Carmel when you step, when you make that turn exactly where you want to put the fence in, and you look out across the North Dunes and see the ocean. I just, I wouldn't put a fence there. I'd put more signs that say, make sure your dogs are on a leash. When I walk there, I see people with their dogs on a leash. I don't see a lot of dogs running willy-nilly through there. I don't think the tidestrum lupin would be coming back if it was a dog playpen because the report, at least I understood that that's extremely fragile plant and that it's, the thing that's hurt it the most is the ice plant, and that getting the ice plant out of there has really helped it to return. So I think for me, the, I like the, in that particular instance, I like the cable fencing that's there. I'd rather see more effort be put in maintaining the boardwalk because there are a lot of boards right now that are loose, that aren't, we call it, the screws have come up, the planks are loose, there's trip hazards. And the problem when we get to not maintaining on a regular basis is we get into deferred maintenance where it costs just a lot more. So I would rather see us work on the boardwalk than building fences there. I think the fences along San Antonio and Ocean and some of the other areas where you have high, high traffic makes sense to me. But I just wouldn't, I wouldn't put the fence there personally.
The alternative point of view regarding putting signs, of course, and keeping just the current fence. Dogs, you know, you're always going to have the scofflaws, I guess, you know? Even if there's a sign that says, don't let your dog here, they're going to still run through there, right? And a dog's going to get, you know, into that area with the current string fence or the wire fence, whatever it is. My personal opinion is I would prefer not to have more signs there. You know? Like you said, it's a great spot. And looking out there and seeing another sign that says, please don't let your dog go here, when you know that some dogs are just going to go there, you know, the dog's not going to look at it and go, okay, I can't go there, I'm not going to go there. Just a different perspective.
Yeah. It's more, I didn't realize.
Yeah.
Because I didn't see the sign.
Yeah.
So I don't mean put them every 10 feet, but, you know, just maybe place one or two sort of as you're going down, even on the right-hand side, just so you're aware because I think it's easy to miss them. I'm not a dog owner, so, you know, I don't, I, perhaps I'm not looking for them, but I certainly didn't see them. So just a thought, just a thought.
I think even by where you get the dog, there's a, the pink dog bags are up by the trash cans. And even if there were a sign there that said, you know, this is a fragile habitat, if there was more signage there for people to really understand, it's interesting. That's one area where I don't see pink bags. That's one area where I don't see pink bags on either side of the boardwalk when I walk there regularly. I see unattended pink bags regularly on the beach that I pick up. I don't see pink bags in that habitat area that people have just left, just personally.
I was just going to add that, so the signage would be something else that we would bring back to the commission for your review. So the item before you would just be the fence tonight.
Does anybody have any more comments, questions? Jerry?
All those markings beyond that cable fence are from dogs, squirrels. What else would cause all those imprints on the sand beyond those cables?
Yeah, I guess it could be a variety of animals.
Yeah, squirrels, dogs. Lizards aren't that big. No.
Not too big.
Okay.
Raccoons.
Crows, okay.
Yeah, we have raccoons, a lot of raccoons.
Down at the beach, that close?
I've never seen it at the beach.
So I guess it's up to the commission to decide to approve or not approve. Oh, public comment, okay.
Do we have any public, are you, no more questions here? Yeah. Do we have any public, do we have any public comment? Please step forward. Yep.
I'm Laura Ovra. I own the properties that, we share a fence with the city on the North Dunes, where the eucalyptus trees used to be. And admittedly, you know, dogs can't read the signs and many of our tourists that bring their dogs can't read English either. So I'm not sure how much, you know, too much more signing is going to do. And it's true, but the footprints that you see, the post and rail fences aren't going to keep out the rabbits and the raccoons and the, you know, not at all, really. And we have tons of rabbits now. I mean, I'm overtaken. I think they're having a convention in my lot. The other thing, just like you pointed out about the ice plant is more of a problem that's interfering with the growth of the tide-stroms lupin and all of that. And I used to go out there with Joey Canepa and count all those plants. And I guess my concern, I don't even know, I was talking to Evette about this before the meeting, so I don't know who I'm supposed to be talking to about keeping the weeds, keeping the ice plant out of there and keeping the weeds on your side of the fence under control because I did what you guys asked five years ago and kept only California native on my property. So I'm trying to make sure that your stuff on the other side of the fence doesn't grow onto mine. And it used to, Joey used to do a pretty good job keeping that under control with all of her volunteers, but I haven't seen anybody out there doing that. It's pretty overgrown. So I don't know who, is there, I don't know if there's a committee or an organization or something that's supposed to take care of that. But anyway, so I don't want to say yea or nay to the post and rail, but if you're concerned about the footprints, I'm pretty sure that a post and rail isn't going to keep out the little critters, the squirrels or any of that. And a lot of people just don't read signs, so I'm not sure what the answer is, but thanks for listening.
Thank you. I think a question on the ice plant, because there were several times last year where you reported and Bob reported on crews going out there, taking out ice plant and it's, I understood it to be really heavy, like when you pile it up, to like actually remove it from that area is hard because it's heavy and the boardwalk is kind of, may not feel long, but if you're hauling heavy stuff, it's hard to get it out of there. So is there, do we have a, like a regular maintenance schedule to remove the ice plant and keep that, keep that area as healthy as possible? Like, is that funded? Because that might be a really good use of this money if it's not funded.
We're working at the direction of the biologist and he said, "Don't do that side of the North Dunes." We concentrated the efforts. Last month, we did about, between the city crew and Town and Country, they removed about 10 to 15 tons next to the volleyball court, the bathroom, and then they're just going to go back out to do the other part. I'm sorry. East of the walkway by the bathroom, there's a whole big section. And I don't know if you noticed that little bright yellow flower with the stringy leaves, that's actually worse than the big one, because that one goes down about like a foot or two. It's really nasty to pull out. So I've got Town and Country out there working tirelessly to try to get the less sensitive areas, to try to bring that back to being better habitat. And then when I get word from the biologist, because they'll have to be out there monitoring, "Don't step here, don't step here." It's, we have, you know, the budget's not an issue, it's just coordinating with the biologist and we're moving forward to try to get as much out as possible. I mean, there's like a whole hillside. It's a huge endeavor to rid that whole place of ice plant.
It's an unending maintenance problem, right?
Totally.
I regularly see, you know, when you did the efforts before, there was piles of ice plant to the left of the boardwalk as you walked toward to the beach, right? But there's still quite a bit of ice plant.
There's so much.
Out there, right? So I, it just, it raises a question, right? Like, if that, to me, I got was, at least in the report we were provided, a significant impediment to the habitat for the dunes was getting rid of the ice plant and the non-native. So it's just if there's more emphasis on that, I guess, is the question.
Yeah, so Joey Canepa is still, she leads our volunteer efforts out at North Dunes. And then John at Dene Stuffy and Associates does the annual reporting and works alongside with Joey Canepa, gets all of the information and then reports it out. And typically, they'll report it out in the fall. And so they are gathering, they're in the process of gathering that information and that annual report will be brought to you for, yeah, in the fall.
Already time for that?
Well, no, because it's only May. So, yeah, that's something. And then if, you know, the resident wants to contact somebody about, you know, an issue out at North Dunes, they can, the city forester or the environmental programs manager, we can help with, you know, issues that are going on at North Dunes.
Would anybody else like to make a public comment on the proposed split rail fence along the boardwalk? Anybody online?
No one at this time.
Okay. We'll bring you back to the commission. Does anybody, anybody like to propose a motion? Any more comments?
I'll move that we approve the fence as presented to us, the wooden fence. It is a mitigation against interlopers beyond what is there now. We never had in mind keeping out small creatures. That's part of the life. Lizards have to cross, they can cross either way. So I move that we approve the fence materials.
Is there a second on the motion?
I actually had trouble hearing you.
Sorry, I move that we approve the material cost of the $6,500 or so for that fence as was proposed to us in the North Dunes.
Okay, I'll second it.
Commissioner Burling?
Yes.
Commissioner Mickey?
I don't know that I'm ready to make a decision, I was hoping we'd talk more about it. Going to say no?
Commissioner Jerry?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruda?
No.
Sheriff Rosowski?
No.
The motion is denied.
All right, the next item is the April 2025 foresters' report. So I'm going to run down the normal categories. As of now, I've been, you know, copied on the emails between the several commissioners and our consultant, Nikki Nedf, and it seems like we're almost there, right? Would you say commissioners were really close to having a draft that we can present to public comment and go out to SEQA? It's in our budget for, we budget the, we put the budget out for the SEQA consultant. The budget, of course, has not been accepted yet. It's been presented Tuesday night. And what's the date for the, there's a workshop, I believe, that's where the budget will finally get adopted, the 22nd or 28th?
I believe it is.
Later this month.
May 22nd.
May 22nd. So if anyone wants to go to the budget meeting. And hopefully, if that gets approved and we have a good draft, then we'll start moving forward with that beginning of the fiscal year.
We'll start what?
Moving forward with the environmental review process.
Okay, is Nikki taking in the information that we have about fires now that have just come up very recently in the areas that are...
It's really, that's a separate report. That's the California, the Community Wildfire Prevention Plan. So that's managed by the fire department with us and the three cities around us. And that, they should be, they'll be married, they're not going to be opposed to each other.
But I think for the, for the next public workshop, the steering committee workshop, we should anticipate that that will be a hot topic.
Definitely.
What our draft, what the draft is and what that report is. Because I think the current draft that Nikki is working on has not yet integrated or incorporated.
The new maps.
The newest maps that just came out and that were at city council this week. So, and I think it's unrealistic to expect that she'll have that integrated before we have that next workshop.
Yeah.
So to the questions we had in chambers, I think the idea is that our next public steering committee workshop will be, did we say early June? I think, Tamara, we were, I forgot your dates again, but it was when you get back, which would be...
I'm back for the June meeting, so perhaps after the June meeting?
Yeah, so right after, right after our next Forest and Beach Committee meeting.
Okay, so mid-June?
We should be able to schedule our next public steering committee workshop, I guess that's what we're calling them. And that would be probably, we could probably do that the week after, the week after our next Forest and Beach meeting. So maybe third, the third week of June, second or third week of June. I think for you, the key thing, Justin, would be to coordinate a, I know last time there was some date coordination with the city to be able to get the venue set up properly.
Yeah. We're still deciding whether we want to do it over there after the turnout last time.
Oh, okay.
We might just go back to having it in chambers.
Oh, okay. Whatever, however, whatever you think is best.
Yeah.
I just think that's probably the timing that we should...
No, and we'll send out dates to make sure that everyone is available like last time.
I'm happy to work with you next, next week, just touch base.
Okay, perfect. Yeah.
We can coordinate. So I think Melanie, you had had a question specifically about this. Our Nikki Nedda, right now, has the pen on the drafting of the next version. And our goal is to have that, you know, wrapped up in the next week or two so that it can be just available for people to see, so that there's plenty of time for the public to review it and bring in comments to that workshop.
That's really outstanding. Can I just make a comment for information for all of you regarding this timing of things? Because I was at the council meeting until... I was at the council meeting until 10 o'clock the other night. And the fire maps, of course, got a great deal of discussion. And you might want to check, Kelly, with the mayor, but it was my understanding that what was going to happen is that a committee was going to be formed by residents to study all this and to make suggestions, do a report or some such thing that would go out to the residents to explain this because what they're asking for is really serious. It's really quite monumental for this community. And so I don't, I don't know how the mayor plans on responding to this organizationally, but it's there. And I don't know, again, it's going to affect your timeline and what you're talking about today. So thank you for the ability to comment because I think it would just, I thought it would be helpful for you all to know that there's a little glitch that's new in the mix, so.
Well, and Linda Smith is on our steering committee for the Urban Forest Master Plan. And so she was one of the people who respond, you know, responded to that. So I think, you know, our current plan does not, the current plan as drafted does not look like it came from this California fire entity. It doesn't, it doesn't anticipate all of the things that they would require in the current plan. So I think there will be, there will be likely a lot of discussion about that, both at our public workshop, and I think the city will have to respond also.
Yeah, I'm not quite, I know that Linda is on, you know, is on your steering committee. And Linda made comments the other night too, but I specifically made comments about the fact that there are probably only a handful of people in this community who really understand the magnitude of what's being presented. And the fire prevention, I guess he's a chief, I don't know what his title would be, but it seems to me that he's really the one in charge of all of this. He was very open to working with people in the community because he realizes that this is going to be extremely controversial and very expensive for residents to comply with what's being asked of them. And so, so there's going to be another interface of public interaction on all of this before the decisions are all made.
Thank you.
So we will, we will see what we see. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a couple more questions. That was the first bullet of my report.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry. We digressed a little there, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
On what? On the master plan? The Forest Master Plan. Okay.
Normally, yeah, we need to stick with the order as much as possible. I understand you guys have questions, but Justin does need to get through his report and then commission comments and questions can be taken after that. Sorry. Thank you. Thanks for keeping a sunshine.
Yes, okay, so that is where we're at with the CFMP. Our contractors have been out working a lot. TOPS has been in Mission Trail Nature Preserve, removing dead trees, pruning trees and taking out a big tree that fell in the garden. And when they do that work in the preserve, they do top the trees to 30 feet above the ground to maintain bird habitat as directed by the Friends of Mission Trail and Greg Di Ambrogio. Community Tree Service ground, 90-plus stumps south of Ocean, so every stump south of Ocean should be done, or at least the ones that are in Treekeeper, because that's the other problem, you know, not every tree was in there. But we're doing a lot, we really, they've been really working hard. I don't know if you noticed, the ones down town have been ground down, good spots, and then hopefully the Friends of Forest can help us refill some of those spots. So between city staff and community tree service, we've done 223 stumps this fiscal year, which is kind of amazing. I never thought something like that could happen. I'm impressed. So again, back to the city and the crew, we got our Arbor Day Foundation, Tree City USA, which I, you know, worked on that for a long time and I'm really proud of. You know, they took, everyone's taking my thunder. We participated in the Earth and Arbor Day at Devon Dorf Park. It was a really good time. We gave away over 20 trees, pines, oaks and cypresses. And we still have oaks. We still have all kinds of trees. If anybody wants trees... If anybody wants trees, email us or email me, and they're at the Public Works Yard. We've been, I grew 50 oak trees at my house. And Marnie, one of the planners, grew about 25 oak trees at her house. And we just, the amount of acorns, it was just a science project, so we have tons of acorns. And Renee grew oaks from Carmel. We have all kinds of trees. If anybody wants trees, just if we can't get them to you, we'll find a way to get them to you. The crew removed 13 dead, dying, or dangerous trees, one stump, and pruned 103 trees, providing clearance for roads and stop signs as well as maintaining and also for tree health. And then one tree was planted for Arbor Day. And I took another tree and planted it at City Hall. So two trees were planted by the city crews. And then after that, a couple weeks after, the crew participated in aerial rescue training, which was really cool. They had like a 150-pound dummy that was up in a tree. They had to climb up the tree, attach them to their saddle and get them down just to help, not only help them be safe and maintain their their skills, but it's a requirement for ERIC's Certified Tree Worker Certification. And then constantly picking up logs from PG&E removals. I don't know if you've all noticed those ugly piles around town that I'm going to have to, I'm sending a nasty call to PG&E either later today or tomorrow morning. They, for some reason, they're sending out a bucket truck with no chipper, and they're just cutting, cutting, and then planning to come back later. And I don't know when they're coming back, so. Last month, we took in 20 permits and approved 19. This is out of order. I apologize. I don't have the permit info. I'm so sorry. We took in 194 tickets in our Fresh Desk ticketing system and put out 188. But let me get to the master plan catch-up because I know that's what everyone wants to talk about. So as of this, as of the last two months, so I understand it's very confusing and I am, it was a little frustrating for me, too, that I'm just been so, I was so busy, and especially the end of the month, when I'm preparing these reports, I have to get it done in time for the the second week of the month. And then this week, you know, there was, it was the second, and had everything had to be in pretty much the day after the beginning of the month. So Neil, we should meet next week or something to get exactly. Because I, it's frustrating for me, too, because it's just up in the air. But as of now, with our counts, we've removed 183 dead, dying, or dead and very poor trees and removed 223 stumps. We expect to hit more stumps this year and plan to do upwards of 250. I think the X and Y is wrong in this slide, but again, I want to show you that a lot of these poor, even excellent, good, fair trees that are being removed, at the time of removal, they're dead or very poor. It's just the nature of nature and the ever-changing dynamic of our forest. And then I put the numbers for where we got the budget numbers. But yeah, any questions? Lots. Of course.
I think, Justin, if we could just get together on this, because I don't.
Yeah.
We don't need to go over it now, but I forwarded the slide. Hans put together a slide that he presented at City Council on Monday on the catch-up plan that was, that also included the poor trees, which are some were to be pruned and some were to be removed. So I just think.
That wasn't, but yeah, I just want to show you the numbers at the end because that's where the budget number came from. So the poor, they weren't technically part of the three-year catch-up. The very poor, dead in the stumps were.
I think they were part of the 5.5 million, the big number. They should, they were.
I.
In the slide deck. They're not, not on the city responsibility, not on the city crew responsibility, but on the overall plan. Anyhow, we don't, we can.
Yeah.
If we could just have a meeting, that would be awesome. And Neil, that would be, yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, I may have some thoughts on how to fix up some of this. I noticed like there is a duplicate slide in here, and we can talk later, right? One obvious question, maybe this is information already out there. Is there definitions for excellent, good, fair, poor, very poor, dead trees? There is in the system, and 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 these were done by the Davy. Right, right. Inventory. But yeah, there's, they're pretty common industry standard definitions, and I'll find those for you. That'd be great. I'm just kind of wondering if other people outside of this group, it would be worthwhile to make sure people are aware of what this is. Because, you know, sometime, like, I'm trying to understand the difference between excellent and good or good and fair. I think a lot of other people might also. I mean, I think excellent, there shouldn't be, there's no, I don't think there's anything, such thing as an excellent tree. That's and that's, you know, it's, that's the part, it's partly subjective because a fair, fair to one person is poor to another. And that's, you know, we do our best as professionals, but I worked with a forester who I said, oh, that tree's fair, that tree's in good condition and has a pretty old-school forestry goes, poor, 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 they're all poor. Right, I mean, there's always going to be subjective, right? Yeah, but. But I also wonder, having some good, clear-cut definitions. No. That are available to everybody could help to make things a little bit more objective, right? Yeah. And reduce some of the conflict, so to speak. And I think, yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to jump in there. Yeah. But I think a lot of the excellent ones also were like newly planted, right? It's never going to get better. So that that would be like an excellent tree. Right, right, understood.
But it is true that from when the inventory was established and that stake in the ground was put on those numbers, that some of those, it's not surprising that some of those very poor trees have become dead.
Yeah.
Across the year.
Yeah.
Right? And so it's the, it's like you said, it's a living forest, right?
Yeah.
But I do think that working to get some tracking in place, that we can feel like is reliable, consistent month to month would be really great.
Yeah.
So that would.
That's what we're looking for, consistency.
Yeah.
Right. Am I allowed to ask my question about the former Forest Master Plan? Ask whatever you want.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. I mean, I do have a concern because I was going back, looking at the different, the previous month's agendas, et cetera. And I know she's been working, Nikki's been working on this for at least six months, you know, putting in the edited comments. And to me, and maybe I have to adjust my timeline, six months seems like a lot of time to, you know, update based on commentary, comments from people. I would think six weeks at the longest, right? Let me finish. Oh, no, no, I was, I understand, but also look at those that way. Right, right.
Is this Nikki's work, you mean?
Pardon?
Is this Nikki's work? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
But she was sick for, you know.
We'll talk about it.
Yeah, I think part of it is just the time, like, I remember when Sarah, this is before you.
Sarah Davis.
When Sarah Davis, who was the city forester before Justin, who initiated this, and she talked about this as being a three-year process.
Right.
I was like, how can this be a three-year process? I now have an appreciation for the process, right? So I think it's, there's lots of things, lots of factors, but we'll have, I think out of this next public Steering Committee Workshop, we'll be, that's the first time we'll be bringing in the public, well, I shouldn't, not the first, but we'll be bringing robust public comment, and there'll be another revision cycle. And there's other pieces that have to then be, there's a SEQA review that has to happen, that there'll be more public comment related to that. There's this new wildfire piece that's come in, right? There's there, it just will, it will be ongoing for a while still.
Right. Again, I guess going back to my comment about timelines, right? Watching projects, making sure they're not slipping. I know there's a lot of pieces here, and that's why I'm kind of bringing it up. I want to make sure, and there was commentary from the audience, too, on this. Let's make sure that people are aware that it's being worked, that it's complicated, right? But progress is being made. I'd like to get your opinion. So there's the environmental review. Yes. Right? And in my mind, I'm thinking, okay, that's a parallel but important track. I want to understand how that folds into this, too. Well, the environmental review is for the SEQA, so they're going to make sure that what we're doing is, what the plan says is correct and follows all the laws, that we're not, that we're mitigating any possible. Right. Issues that were, that are possibly being created by the plan. So but to do that, you have to have that. Right. Final draft. So we're, we're almost, I'm hoping we're almost there, and I believe we are. Right. So again, coming back to my comments, right? There's a lot of pieces coming together that are really important, right? The fire mass, the fire severity thing, right? The SEQA stuff, the environmental stuff. Is there a timeline that shows when all these things are being plugged in and the expectations so that we just kind of, you step back and you look at it going, okay, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be going on, and here's kind of the order it needs to happen so we can make sure that if something's delayed, it's going to push everything out, then people are aware. That's my, that's kind of the general, larger question. As opposed to, it's up in here in Justin's mind, and he's tracking it, but nobody else knows it. No, I wouldn't say there's a hard-set timeline. And like, like I was saying, Chair Brzezinski and Commissioner Mickey are working with Nikki on the edits, so. Is it possible to put a timeline? I mean.
It's, I think it's, it's tricky because some of the things, the timing can be uncertain. But it is something where we have, we have tried to convey what the next step is and and aim for for timing. So it's something that we can certainly look at doing more of, for sure.
And I believe.
We had, one of the, one of the things that's been challenging, I think this, this came a little ahead of you, you joining us, was the Davy Resources Group. You know, some of the work they did, for example, like the tree inventory, like, there were certain aspects of what they did that were really helpful. But when they, when they put their first plan together, it didn't look like something that was what we would typically expect in Carmel.
Right.
And there was quite a reaction to that. So we've, we've sort of pivoted, we've had a pivot here where Nikki is now taking the pen to lead the drafting of the plan and to bring that, and we'll continue to hold the pen until we get this thing across the line. So we've had to make some revisions and changes.
Right.
And are in the process.
Right.
And then there was a change in personnel, too, which added, added to it with the director and a different.
Right. Unfortunately, though, there's, there's events that are occurring, right? That this thing needs to get done, right? And it can't just keep delaying because there's other significant things that are dependent on it or will make our lives easier or harder if we don't get this done.
I think all of us have faith that it's going to get done, but it does take a while. I have a question, though, on this very beginning part where you put biological consultant Nikki. So she's working with the Forest and Beach Commission and staff to finalize the thing. So what she's presenting to us?
We'll finalize the draft, not, sorry, not finalize the.
The draft.
Okay.
It's a draft, it will be a draft.
Doesn't say.
The first draft for public comment.
Yes.
Is what it will be.
Sorry, draft.
First draft for public comment.
Okay.
Yeah, not finalize it, not just get it out there.
Yeah. It doesn't sound like that.
Good clarification.
We decided not to publish the Davy Resource Group.
Yeah.
For public comment, but rather to get a revised version that Nikki could pin.
For SEQA. I mean, it was public comment because it, because people, didn't people, they had the chance to come to the last meeting.
People saw it and came to the workshop, but we didn't post it as like, this is our proposed.
We didn't send it to SEQA.
We didn't post the Davy plan as a proposed plan.
Yeah. Just out of curiosity, is it like a 50-page document, 100-page document, 300-page document? It was about 100, 120, 100-something?
Yeah.
Plus the inventory and it's, it's not 50, it's not small, but it's not like a.
I still have mine.
War and peace.
I do. Maybe I have to see it.
Are there any other?
I was thinking, I'm not sure what I did with mine.
We can send them the PDF.
But it'd be good for you to see it, just out of curiosity.
Yeah. Do you not have it? No, I don't. Okay, I'll, yeah, when we talk, I'll get you everything that we have. That'd be awesome. Thank you.
Historical file.
Yeah.
If you, I think it would be helpful to have the one that they proposed and our current that we're working under, just to have.
Yeah, I've read that the current one.
You've got the current one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like the current Davy or the current, like, 19, 2001? The old.
We can take.
The one from 2000.
And I'll, I'll give you the.
We can make sure.
1981, Greg D'Ambrosio one, and then the, the proposed Davy one. Right, great.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Of course.
Any other questions for Justin? Thanks for, Justin, getting together on the tracking. I don't know, Neil, if you want to take the lead to coordinate a meeting next week.
We'll get, we'll touch, yeah. I'll reach out to you guys probably on Monday. Okay.
And I see the, the tree crew's still working like crazy right now. They're doing, I know there's a huge push here at the end of the fiscal year, but the, the work is really important for our city, and it just feels like people are, you know, you can, people are working really hard. And I also think the attention to detail that the city is putting around the work is really impressive, like blocks before the road is, you know, the, all of your signage about single lane ahead or road closed or go, you know, rather than getting traffic jams at the moment of where the tree is trying to come down. I really, it looks like there, there's some effort that's been put into.
Absolutely.
The traffic and safety management, which is really appreciated because there's, there's a lot of work being done. It would be nice if you're able to, I don't know if you, you have the opportunity in one of the Friday letters to just do a blurb about acknowledging how much work is being done and that this is against our, like, catch-up plan, that this is deferred maintenance. It's important for our city. We're excited, we're getting caught up. I would do like a, just to let people know, it's not like we're out willy-nilly, you know, cutting trees down.
No, definitely.
And that they're part of a plan and to the point of, there was a comment about like the nesting.
Yeah.
You know, I think normally, that's something you guys check for, so it's not like, we should, we should think about that as it relates to the city plan, right? If there's a way to.
Yeah, and our contractors are really good. Like, West Coast, once I kept sending them out to do some jobs and they kept saying, well, there's, there's, there's a nest, or I saw a bird coming in now even after nesting season. So that's, we got our biologist to go up and have the tree crew stick a camera in there. So we're, we're, we try to be as, you know, cognizant of the laws as possible.
Yeah.
You know, we're not trying to do, and to the point of the blurbs, me and Tom have been toying with, bringing back out on a limb Greg D'Ambrosio and Gary Kelly's segment of the Pine Cone. But we want to get, you know, reinteract with the public, too.
I think that's a great idea.
That is a good idea.
Because people will be, I think it'll be a relief to people to feel like that what you're doing is getting caught up.
Yeah.
And that you're not just out cutting trees down, right?
Yeah.
Because that's the, and I think unfortunately, when people just feel like, oh, they're just cutting trees, that, that creates a negative sentiment in our community when actually you guys are doing a lot of really important work right now, right?
Yeah. I think, is Linda on?
Okay. I don't, I don't think actually we have public comment on the, the.
Okay.
The, the public works and forestry reports. That's a, just from a protocol standpoint, we, we sort of went off a little bit earlier.
You can, that information, what, you can.
We can?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Then if we can, then let's let Linda make her comment, because I, I was, you caught us once there, you bet. I wanted to make sure that we were. Okay, so it's okay, then, then let's let, Linda, you've got three minutes if you'd like to make a comment.
Linda, go ahead.
Yes, I had a, excuse me, I, I just had a, I had a question about the draft of the revised Forest Management Plan. As, as members of the Steering Committee, the Citizens Group, would we have access to, to Nikki's draft ahead of time?
Sure. Yes, you'll have almost a month, you'll have at least two or three weeks of access, Linda. The reason we're scheduling that meeting for, like, mid-June, after the June Forest and Beach Meeting, is to make sure that it's available to the Steering Committee with sufficient time for people to review it before the meeting.
Right, yeah. I just, you know, I have a lot of knowledge, so I, I would really like to, I really like to participate in it in some way. But I also had another comment to the new commissioner. It's a really steep learning curve for people to learn about Carmel's history, to learn about the ecology of this area. And all of that is involved in each step along the way of this Forest Management Plan update, and knowledge of our general plan, and, you know, the LCP, our codes, which are all in tune with one another. So, I, I think the, the fact that it's taken quite some time, and is gonna take quite some time, is sort of to be expected, because, as I say, it is a, it is a steep learning curve. And I would like to offer a copy of Monterey Pine Forest Watch's book, which I've given to every other member of the Steering Committee and
I'll take it.
Forest and Beach Commission, to the new one. So, I, I will drop off a copy at City Hall for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. And with that, I think our next, oh, I'm sorry. Did you have another comment, Melanie? I'm sorry.
Just as a kind of prelude to the report, how much roughly are we interfacing the old Forest Master Plan? Because that was one thing that was discussed right after the last workshop, was the fact that many people thought that the current master plan was good, and why were we spending a lot of consultant money on a new plan? And at the end of that, it was commented on by people at the meeting, that the result of all of the discussion was, there was much, it was good in the current master plan, it was going to interface with the new work that was being done. So, can anybody enlighten us as to what's going on with the integration of both of those documents?
I think that was Nikki's assignment, was to go...
Is she totally in charge of integrating everything, all aspects?
Yes, with, with input from the, from the Steering Committee and the public, yes. But she now holds the pen, and the, you know, I think there was ample feedback that the current plan needed to be updated, right? So, she's working on updating an executive summary, a state of the forest. She's working on updating that, yeah.
She has a major job.
She does.
Oh, my gosh.
She's good.
And she couldn't see part of the time, right?
We're lucky, yeah.
Thank you very much.
She's taking time.
We're lucky that she was willing and able, interested, in stepping into that role.
She's certainly qualified.
Okay. With that, I think we'll move to our last topic, which is future agenda items. We have any? I had two. The first was Forest and Beach priorities. I'd like that to be listed as a future topic again. I know that was supposed to be on the agenda this month. We'll take that up with the appropriate city staff and Dale on that for the, hopefully for the June meeting. And the second topic is, I'd like us to review the current tree fines.
Tree fines.
The current tree fine, all of our current tree fines and charges associated with trees.
Oh, fines.
With the, fines, with the idea being that we could have a discussion about those and consider a recommendation that we could make to City Council about making revisions quickly, to just have that. My understanding is it's just two times through City Council, and they can update the, the code. So, I think the fines, and I guess this is just really a question for the, for city staff, is if you have, if there will be time for you to prepare that, so that we can see all the fines next meeting, or if you need help from a commissioner, I think we could find some...
I can bring the fines, and then, would you like some, like, recommendations, or...
If you have time, yeah.
I mean, I can, I can show you what other cities have done.
Okay.
And, because I've worked all over the state, and there's some really harsh, but, I mean, I, I've worked everywhere, and they all do different things. So, I think, I'll, I can bring some examples that would really...
To the, to the extent you could do that, Justin, I think that would be awesome.
I have, Maury, I think it's not a problem.
That would be really helpful. Because I think, you know, the thing that I'm responding to here is, we so often will take up an item that we have to act on in a commission meeting, and we've had several where we've, I think there's been consensus that the fine associated with the tree violation were not commensurate with one another. And we always say, "Oh, wouldn't it be nice to do something?"
Yeah.
And so, let's do something, right? Let's see what, let's see what they are presently.
Yeah.
If you can make a recommendation, that would be great.
Okay.
Let's have a discussion. And if we can come up with a recommendation, we can take to council. I mean, that's something that we can impact.
Yeah, definitely.
When I say quickly, in a few months, you know, as opposed to a few, right? Like, it's, it's something we could cycle through in a couple of months.
2025.
And that, I think, would be really fantastic, because we continue to have so much development in our town
Yeah.
that it's too easy for people right now to not do the right thing with the trees.
Yeah, and I'll probably consult with the Planning Department, too, and then see if anyone can be at the meeting, because when I normally have those discussions, it's with the planners, because we just are seeing so many trees disappear, be severely impacted.
It'd just be nice to know. And I would say, you know, it would also be, like, it would be good, I think, for us also to look at, you know, maybe we want to waive a permit cost for somebody that's taking down a dead tree in their yard, right? So, I think, the other area I'd like to look at is that, because we have a lot of dead, we've identified all these dead trees in our city catch-up plan. But I remember Davy saying, they just inventoried the public tree inventory.
Yes.
But our public space and our private space is on the same land, and so, we probably have a lot of very poor and dead trees on private property, and they're expensive to remove, right? And so, it might be, if we could incentivize people to, to help us get the dead trees down.
Yeah, and I have done that with, when I have to send letters, when neighbors, when I get like four or five concerned neighbors and I send letters, I'll say, you know, notifying you of a, a dead tree at your property, I'm so sorry, that, you know, this, this constitutes authorization, there's no fee, please mitigate the dead tree.
Right. So, that's a great, like, that's great that you have the, that you can do that. And so, maybe we should just...
Publicize, make that...
Publicize, or make it, if you, if you're, if it ends up being a dead tree, right, there's no charge. I just think that's the other area we should look at when we look at the...
I agree. We want to encourage that. We want that encouraged.
Of course, me, too.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Right.
Okay. Anybody else for the future agenda?
Oh, gosh, I had a question.
There you go. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. If they take down a dead tree, there should be some provision or incentive for them to replace it with a upper canopy tree, if it was an upper canopy tree, too, that's all.
I think that's in our current, like, meetings.
Definitely, but I also think that this is good meat for the future discussion. Like, we shouldn't get caught up in the discussion now, but yeah.
This is really not to be followed through.
Maybe this is, everybody knows this, but maybe a review of the rules and regs, like, I'd like to get a better understanding of the, the process for, like, a tree renewal and the rules of when something can be removed or not, and things like that, just to make sure we're all on the same page. Yeah. Oh, with the fines and penalties, I can go over the...
That'd be great.
Thank you.
That was on a quick, okay, let me see how much work this is, to see if it, if it's a next month kind of thing, or if it's July. If it would be July, would that be acceptable? If it's more, a more robust staff report?
That's, that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And then, Justin, can I ask a question? When you two have an opportunity, can you email that to the commission first, so we can take a look at it before whichever meeting, June or July, that we're going to look at this, just so...
No problem.
We can have a second to just kind of take it in and see, see, see what you're recommending, see what we currently have, and...
Yeah, and as I, as I come across all the code sections...
Just send it to us.
I can just send you stuff as that goes.
That'd be great.
You know, food for thought.
Okay, thank you. That'd be great.
Excellent. Okay. I think with that, it's, we'll adjourn the meeting at 4:10. Thank you.
Will you join?